Well, hello free people of the Rocky Mountain region and welcome to this Free State Colorado interview. Today I'm joined by Weld County Commissioner Lori San. Commissioner San was previously a liberty leader in the state legislature where she served for eight years. Commissioner San, I hope you are well and thank you for joining me today.
Well, thank you so very much. Very excited to be here.
Well, Commissioner, what do Weld County residents need to know about what's happening in Weld County specifically with the commissioners?
Well, it's a great question to ask. Most most eyes are under state legislature because those are laws that are being passed that affect everyone. And so of course, it garners more of the news cycle. Whether a legislator says something that they deem to be something that is shocking and against the current cultural morass, so to speak. I've certainly been there. As you mentioned, I've been in the state legislature for eight years and I watched your last show regarding Scott Bottoms. I'm thinking, wow, that sounds really familiar with some of the things he's talking about. And you know, I find myself in a minority right now and some of the same behaviors that he was talking about, especially when he says he's being screamed at in back rooms by the speaker and others to get him to drop something or stop an action. And as far as I can tell, Brandon, and I've always said this, but how can you tell politicians doing their job? Because they can say all the things that they want and they often do on the campaign trail. And I've noticed the same phenomenon where I've even tried to mentor new legislators coming in because it's a two-year cycle. So there's a lot of turnover and they say all these sayings, rah rah rah. And then suddenly everybody has a plan until they get hit in the face. I think Muhammad Ali may have said that, right? And all of a sudden you see them start backing down and soft pedaling and soft shoeing that their boats start going like this and you know, and so I identify what he's saying is that a lot of these folks start peeling off almost right away when, once they realize that their ego is being attacked and you've got to be willing to take punches in the face. When you're standing up for people, you're standing up against a very big machine that wants to keep control and keep power for themselves. And anytime you threaten that, either with your words, especially in a bully pulpit like the state legislature or your votes, because again, the votes is where really the rubber meets the road. Did you really vote for limited government, free markets, individual responsibility, fiscal responsibility, equal treatment under law, rule of law, all those things that we say, those main seven main planks as Republicans, we say we believe in. It's in our party platform, but did you actually vote that way? Right? So that's why scorecards are very important, by the way, in the state legislature. A lot of us, a lot of the people I represent, they're so busy raising the family. They're so busy working so hard, especially to pay all these extra taxes that we pile and then pile on from the federal government or fees that are really taxes, not only from our state government, all the way down to our local level. And we'll get into this in a minute because your local level government taxes actually affect you quite a bit more. And local government can actually impact your life much more than you than you would ever think. So it's even more important that the local level, somebody is actually there to represent you and to vote for limited government and freedom. So, but back to the state legislature, there's a couple of scorecards you've probably mentioned before, which is the Colorado Union of Taxpayers, the only union I will belong to. And they rate legislators on those principles. So those who receive As have gotten a hundred percent cut score. Then their eight years, hundred percent or ninety-eight percent, ninety-nine percent. And then also there's the Republican Liberty Caucus or Freedom Caucus. And they have their own separate scorecard, which is A to B. And most Republicans sadly were an F last year on all those principles. There's a couple like Scott Bottoms, she interviewed, I believe was an A and Stephanie Luck. And there was the Principles of Liberty scorecard, which I think was taken over by the Republican Liberty Caucus. So those are important to look at because it will literally tell you, is this, is this represent actually representing me, the people? Right? Are they empowering me and giving power back to the people? And that's really important versus what we mostly find in government is people trying to empower themselves. So people may be shocked that in Weld County we're often considered a conservative bastion when the last strongholds are Republicanism. And we've had a lot of media out there. I was one, one of the ones that actually pushed the Second Amendment Sanctuary. It had 20,000 hits on Facebook and all of a sudden the commissioners who had said no, suddenly we're writing up a resolution. And you know, but even then I still had the push last year to make sure that our Weld County employees could actually carry in county buildings. And this is a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. And I had to really push hard to change code to allow them to do that. You know, honestly, they shouldn't even need a permit to carry for a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. But you know, that's one of the things I've gotten through and that's the difference that one person makes. And there was a couple of staff that didn't want that to happen because they were afraid that somebody was going to shoot them up. And you know, that's what we hear from the left all the time. Right? And we find John Lot Jr.'s, one of my really good friends, he wrote More Guns, Less Crime. And we find on those areas, it's more concealed permit holders. There's less crime or even people know that there's more concealed carry permit holders. So there's less attempts at robbery even in American homes. So anyway, so I'm not doing all the talking straight through Brandon, because I know you've got a lot of great questions, but there's a lot of things I can tell you about regarding Weld County and the Weld County Commissioners. But I thought I'd start with that introduction, just to kind of warm us up a little bit.
Oh, definitely. No, I appreciate you sharing some of your record. You know, I've seen track your career through the years when I was down at the state legislature as a legislative aide for Tim Leonard back in 2017 and obviously working with Patrick Neville as well. Your credentials are about as strong as they get for a pro-liberty legislator in Colorado. You know, I was excited to see that even Thomas Massey had endorsed you for your congressional run in 2022. So it's great to hear you're continuing the fight that you didn't write off into the sunset, that now you're working more on that local level in Weld County to defend our gun rights, to help protect taxpayers and keep the fight going. So I got to applaud you for that, Commissioner San, because so many, it's so unfortunate, you know, over the years, we've had so many good legislators, so many good liberty leaders who then, you know, end up moving out of state or retiring or putting politics behind them. So thank you for keeping the torch of liberty alight and continue to fight on. But I really want to get into what's going on in Weld County specifically, because like you said, that's my perception, you know, Weld County is is the place for Republican Party politics. It's a place where, you know, liberty individuals should look to move, you know, they're going to protect your gun rights. They're going to protect your property rights, keep taxes low. So it's kind of surprising to me and probably to many other people to hear that maybe the Weld County government isn't quite as pro-liberty, pro-liberty as people think. So what can you tell us? What's some of the information that voters, that citizens in Weld County really need to know about what's going on with the commissioners?
Yeah, I know. I'll start with this because most people I've asked them, what does a Weld County Commissioner do? And the best answer I've gotten so far, because nobody knows, like nobody has any idea. I've gone to rooms of Republicans and asked that question. And one lady said, well, you commission. Which was actually a pretty funny answer. And I'm going to use that forever now, but, but really it's the same if you think about what my basic job really is, it's to vote. That's how I'm supposed to enact policy, just like I did at the state legislature. Now, leadership is obviously so much more than that, right? I provide leadership in my community. I provide leadership like in the state legislature, some of the biggest wins I had for my community didn't even require legislation. And if I could do it right in the interim, we didn't need more laws. You know, the Roman Gloss Rhetoricus said, you know, the more corrupt the government, the more, the more laws, the more numerous the laws, right? So if I can avoid putting a law in the books that affected everybody, I was going to do that, right? So, or best even repeal some laws. There's a lot of laws that we should be repealing. So, so I try to do the same really in this, in, in the local government as well, right? And if I can avoid those situations where we need to add to code, for example, or if I can reduce code. So my focus when I got in there is to really reduce bureaucracy. Any institution, it doesn't matter what the makeup, the political makeup is, there's always some kind of entropy towards more control. I'd call it that way. There's always a slide towards more government. And I notice this particularly of, I will say some bureaucrats, we've got a lot of great staff at Weld County that is very pro-liberty, by the way. And that's one of the reasons they've worked there. That's one of the reasons they've moved there. And, but there's some staff that they've never had to take a risk and start a business, for example. They've never had to put their own money on the line. And that's the difference, you know, for, you know, a lot of our entrepreneurs is they understand that risk. And any barrier you put in front of business, whether it's red tape or delaying things or just not understanding what it takes for a small business to get up and running, that can be a real barrier to prosperity, not only for our citizens, but also for our county. One of the things that we rely on, by the way, very heavily is oil and gas revenue. And because we were very oil and gas rich and we're very blessed to be the top producer agricultural goods. One of the top 10 in the United States, by the way, we're also the top 10 oil and gas producer in Colorado, one of the seven top basins in the U.S. So we're sitting very pretty as far as that kind of wealth, but we do need to start diversifying, just like you're taught in any investment, which means we need to start bringing more businesses and more manufactured back to the US and particularly Weld County to start supplementing our income when oil and gas goes down. But back to this. So I would say our founders in 1970, I would, I'm just going to call them that because they were so very wise. So we have a Weld County Charter. We're one of the two home rule counties in this state, which means a lot of different things. But it means we have more control over our finances, for example. So our Weld County Charter dictates that our government will only grow at five percent per year. So that means we're even more aggressive than Tabor, if you think about it. So, you know, under Tabor, we could be charging 22 mils. We've been forced over time to reduce that to 15, just to round out the number. So to give an example, and I'll try to shorten this up a little bit, but to give you an example of what one person can do, especially if they're liberty minded. And I seek to honor the promise I gave to conservatives and those who elected me regardless of the Republican, Green, Independent or Democrat, is I'm going to be looking out for your pocketbook. Okay? We're in a very good situation in Weld County. And so if we go over that 5%, which still allows government to grow and we go over to that, we have to ask another body called the County Council, the Weld County Council. And the Weld County Council has that job of, gosh, when we're looking at your, your income for the next year, do you really need that excess revenue? And so if they don't, it goes back to the people who desperately need it right now. Okay? So one of the first taxes that was voted on this year was for the children. It was, you can't see my air quotes, I have to go back here. It was for a preschool that would have affected only the southern part of Weld County, which is my district. It would have been additional five mils. That's our, that's our tax increase of mill levy. And I was the only commissioner to vote it down. And so it crosses two districts in the north over to Boulder County. It's funny, I had people from Boulder reach out to me. It's like, oh, we saw you voted no on it. What was your rationale? Because you know, in state statute, if you're reading that, you have to make the assessment if it's, if it's financially feasible. They didn't present that, right? There's a lot of good things that they were presenting, but they did not meet that requirement. So I voted no and the other four commissioners voted yes. Well, I was thinking, gosh, Boulder County is 90% of this district. They're surely going to vote this in. And they voted it down. I was joined by a Boulder County to vote down the tax, the only Weld County Commissioner. So if that tells you anything, it's like, it was like me voting down Gallagher when they had that deceptive language that changed Gallagher. Yes, I'm going to vote no on that, even if it's asking the people, right? And it deceived a lot of people. A lot of these ballot measures are so deceptive, people don't even know what they're voting on. So it's important always, always, always to vote no against more taxes. Our government has enough money to operate. It's doing just fine. But listening to some of the other commissioners that pushed that in front of Weld County Council, you know, it was disaster. We're going to have to cut salaries. We're going to have to cut budgets. We're going to have to go into deficits. Nah, jazz hands. And their rationale for the second tax increase is not the first one I voted against. There's been three. Okay. The first one was for the children. The second one was for the children. The second one was for H children in particular, and it was 78 million for an ag building. So tell me what you think a $78 million ag building is. I mean, it's not the top tower of the ag buildings, right? It's got to have gold saddles or something, right? I mean, it's not getting any of those gigantic, huge ag building you've ever seen in your life, right? But, but unfortunately it was, I even had some ag parents reach out to me. It's like, we're really concerned about this because you're saying that solely for this building, which we were very grateful for, but then you're also putting it here in a flood zone, which we don't think the theme is going to allow you to do that, you know? And so we were talking about alternatives, but in the meantime, they gave a CAD drawing to the Weld County Council that costs 28,000. They'll say, we want $78 million back, please. The resolution literally said a mill levy increase for solely this building and solely this location. So there's a couple of problems there, right? We don't have a real plan to actually even build this building. And that's what, one of the reasons I was protesting. And then one of the commissioners literally said, well, we may or may not build that building. We're just going to spend that money however we want. This is on record. This isn't a recorded meeting. And one of the commissioners, the planning, not planning, I'm sorry, Weld County Council members asked, well, how do I explain this to my constituents? It says solely and solely. He said, well, you can just go ahead and change that resolution if it makes you feel better. If that doesn't tell you, I mean, it's so, it's, I think they know. I suspect that people don't know what a county commissioner does. It doesn't hit the news cycle like your state legislature does, right? So there's not that same kind of focus on how we're voting. So far I've stopped three attempts at a tax increase that would have cost people at least eight mils for your average home. That's, I calculated about $700 and I might be on the low side. But I've saved on taxes for every single homeowner, plus your business owners obviously are even more. So we have to be consistent in what we believe. Regardless if we think people are paying attention or not, we must, we must follow through. And if we can't do that, Brandon, one of the concerns I have going into the future is nobody's going to trust, I will say our party. Because I don't know if you're registered Republican, I suspect you probably are, but who knows, right? I've talked to a lot of people who've switched parties because they're tired, they're disgusted, they're, they're tired of hearing these same kinds of stories, not only at the federal level, but at the state level. And it seems like more people are sliding into that entropy of control, command and control, rather than doing the right thing regardless of what the situation you find yourself in. Whether you have a spotlight or not, it's important to stand on principle. No matter who's mocking you, who's screaming in your face, I've had plenty of that too. I had a commissioner literally shove me out of a briefing, physical contact, shove me and slam the door on me. Another commissioner slammed the door on me because they didn't want me to be in a briefing, which everybody thus far has been free to attend, but it has everything to do with how I vote, right? So I was the only one who voted to join the HH Proposition, Proposition HH lawsuit, the only one, right? And the only one who fought for our employees to have concealed carry. So there's a lot of telling things. I'm only, the only person who voted against increasing of fees on oil and gas, which by the way, is, is really struggling in the state. They're struggling getting permits from the state. We don't need to be making it harder even for them. The only person who has voted against impact fees, which is like triple taxation for homeowners, right? And they're not even spent on the road that the project's going into. There's no guarantee it goes into these large, I would call them slush funds, these benefit districts, right? I mean, so there's a lot of things that we could be doing to reduce the size of government to, to get our boot off the necks of people. We don't need to be piling on to what the federal government is doing or what the state government is doing. In fact, the less, the less the taxes, the more prosperity and, you know, Alec has done a lot of studies on this. Where if you don't have income tax, you actually make more money because people want to come there and produce and take a risk. So that's what's going on in Weld County is a lot of that same spirit that Scott Bottoms was talking about. You know, try, it's, it's cancel culture, but I think both parties are doing it. And it's, it's some of that same spirit where if you vote against us, we're going to punish you and we're going to cancel you out however we can. So I'm going to continue to represent my constituents no matter how I'm treated. I'm going to continue to return good for evil regardless of what happens to me and be professional and do it with a smile on my face and be the happy warrior because, you know, I'm honored to serve no matter how tough it is or if people have my back or don't have my back. It shouldn't change how you vote or how you treat others.
Oh, that's great. I really appreciate you sharing that. I know that's a, a tough situation to be the lone voice of liberty, especially in a place like Weld County. I can't imagine. I thought you brought up a really good point too, with some of these local governments, you know, so much attention is being focused on national politics and then state level politics. There's not really a lot of attention on your local county government or municipalities. So unfortunately, you know, these county commissioners or other institutionalized powers can kind of, you know, know they're not going to be exposed, know that they're not going to get, you know, rough treatment by the citizens because it's not going to make headlines. It's not going to be all over social media if they increase taxes or increase fees or do, or do something that's maybe contrary to these principles of limited government and, and trying to keep a strong economy in the, in the local community there. So that's, it's good that you're exposing that. It's good that you're still fighting out there. And I think it, it kind of shows a need. There's a need in our, in our state and really probably everywhere for there to be kind of watchdogs in terms of the local communities and the county commissioners and saying, hey, you know, let's keep an eye on it. Even though it's Weld County, even though it's Republicans, you know, there still has to be this, this vigilant citizen keeping an eye on the taxpayer funds and on the behavior of these politicians because they, like so many people, like you said, they, they're there for their own career. They're there to secure their own power and maybe their own ego, not necessarily to uphold constitutional principles.
Right. You know, and the other thing is that it's an honor to serve in so many different ways. And there's a lot of things I was able to get done to refine processes, to make it easier for business owners, to make it easier for folks in our county to have even ag buildings to support their businesses and to cut a lot of that red tape. So I was able to do a lot of those things. Now that some of that was changing code, but some of it was simply changing processes and how we do things. You know, for example, we refolded the development review team under one department. And because one of the issues we were having is we didn't have that customer service mentality. If someone made one mistake, they would put their applications at the bottom of a pile and they would revisit it when they had time. Which if you're a business owner trying to start something up, time is money. And every little delay costs people a ton of money, right? And some of these, these businesses don't even get built if they receive so many hurdles that they can't get up in the ground, off of the ground running in time. So, so that's one of the things we did is to, to really, I haven't handed off to one of our directors who really did a good job in following through and making sure that that application didn't get dropped. It was actually put through a process where we visited checklist and got that through as fast as we possibly could. So that's one of the changes we had and making sure that people were treated equally under the law, right? There's, there's times where you pissed off a bureaucrat, started to use that language, but then they would go, oh, okay, I'll just make sure this is very hard then. And people were losing 100-year-old accesses. I heard some of these stories. I'm like, for pulling a water permit heater? You know, a water heater has nothing to do with an access permit, right? Or even an access that's been there for a very long time. So some of these stories were really hair-raising when I got there. So a lot of those processes were refined to make sure that we were following an actual process. Not, you know, just saying, oh, okay, well, we'll get to it when we get to it. Or I don't like so-and-so because they said something, so I'm going to make that very difficult. Especially if something hadn't been followed 100 years ago. We didn't have much code 100 years ago. So, you know, give somebody a little bit of a break and some, and grace and mercy, right? Or making a church out in Stonem, which I don't know if you've ever been to Stonem. There's a lot more cows than people and making a church build this gigantic drainage pond that would have cost millions. Well, who are they harming out in the middle of nowhere other than themselves, right? So there's, there's a lot of processes we refined to make that much easier, to allow people to build things. You wouldn't understand lot coverages, but there's a lot of things that we've gotten done to increase freedom and reduce government. And so that's one of the tests that I was taught by some of our Liberty Caucus in the state legislature. And I haven't had the benefit of going and being led by other leaders who said, well, if you're reading the bill and you can't really, it's really tough to say, because there are bills like that. You ask yourself, does this increase freedom or decrease freedom? And if you can make that thumbs up or thumbs down sometimes go, I think this decreases freedom, then you can safely vote no, right? So you have to look at every policy you make, especially as a local level of the government leader, because it affects people so much more than sometimes state laws do. So if it increases freedom, people are going to take those risks. They're going to build things, they're going to build businesses. And that, that brings benefit to everyone, including our tax base. So being, allowing people to be free to innovate, to increase freedom. You know, that's why people move to Weld County. It's not Boulder County. It's not Laramore County. There's a lot of restrictions there. There's even thought police and all kinds of things going on there where there is at free speech zones in some of these universities. So this is one of the reasons they moved to Weld County, besides the fact that we, we, we don't have a sales tax. We are actually debt-free. And that's again, some great staff that have been with us for a long time that did that over a course of years, paid down our debt. It's now only debt-free, but we've got huge reserves, right? So we can weather those storms when oil and gas revenue goes down. So there's a lot of good about Weld County as well. But I think that drawing that parallel to the state legislature, Brandon, I think the leadership in the state is really affecting what goes on in the rest of our state. And that's, that's not something to mimic or follow. And I do blame somewhat, you know, some of the open primary stuff too, because if you look at when that taken place and you can just look at this as somebody who's vigilant and looking at the scorecards I mentioned earlier about how those scores have fallen since that's taken place. And I think it's because people, conservatives usually raise maybe less funding than some of these big contributor donors who do dark money packs and they're able to fund money to people who have no idea, you know, what may be happening. But this sounds good or feels good. And there's a lot more money being spent saying, this is a bad person. Vote for this person or they're less crazy. They have more money to market, so to speak. And marketing does work, works in business, works in politics, right? But you see where people usually are picking the candidate they want and that candidate, as we have seen in the state legislature, generally likes our votes for more government. And so now we're at a point where Scott Bottoms is telling us how many legislators have quit during just the past year and a half. And given my limited experience in legislatures, eight years, I saw, I think it was three people where we had to appoint, somebody had to appoint a successor to their vacancy committees. Two of those people departed life. So obviously they had to have somebody appointed to replace them. And one person was drummed out by the Me Too movement. Contrast that with 20, is it 24 or 26? I'm not sure I got the right count, but it's, it's a quarter of the entire body in both houses. There's 100 legislators and about 24 who have called it quits. And Scott Bottoms gave us an insight into that where they've been threatened, right? We're going to primary you. And I've heard that my first year, second year or third term, fourth term, you know, this term. You know, we're going to primary you if you don't vote the way we want you to vote. And a lot of them go, yeah, you can take it, you know, and they walk off. And you know, the decorum is something else that they're saying. So somebody, having somebody scream from the chambers. I mean, it's really gone, you know, downhill from when I was there. And I'd actually had just to kind of sew up this part of the conversation. I actually had a Democrat that I served with actually talk to me and said, you know, we can't blame you anymore. I was like, what do you mean? And he said, because we can't say those crazy Republicans are going to kill that bill, so you better do X, right? So they make the bill less odoriferous or they cut some things out, right? So they don't have that backstop of us talking all night long and say, we're going to hold this up unless you kill this bill or you amend it significantly. So they don't even have that backstop anymore. And they're passing things that they don't agree with or can vote for or their constituents want or need. So it's really moved everybody to this area of crazy that I don't think I've ever seen before. And it seems to be infecting everyone else.
Yeah, there's this dramatic split in the Democratic Party these days. And I mean, you're no stranger to seeing the split in the Republican Party, you know, and you're seeing it now, of course, in Weld County with kind of more of the, the, you know, people who just want to go along to get along, maybe continue their career and then people like you who actually want to stand for something. We've seen a lot of that. And then also in the state legislature, seeing this happen with the Democrats. And in years past, it obviously happened with the Republicans. But what do you think? What do you think this pretends to the future of the Colorado Democratic Party and politics here in Colorado with this dramatic split with the Democrats? Do you think this is a potentially a good thing for Republicans? Or how can this help? How can this help change Colorado?
Well, it's going to take some leadership to be able to get this done. And I don't know if I'm seeing that in state house or even in the Senate. Usually leadership comes from somewhere. I know back when some other people were called crazy, they were called the House crazies. And that was Tancredo and some others. I know Bill Armstrong was a huge influence there. He was able to lead all factions of his party. And I'm, I'm not sure I'm seeing that right now from leadership in the House on either party, right? It seems like you're, you're buying into this tit-for-tat, return evil for evil, right? And it's, it's really jeopardizing everyone's ability to work there. So we'll see what happens this session. But I was really disappointed in seeing what happened last year because it's such a far cry. I mean, usually it was like, I likened it to the roadrunner and the coyote where I don't know if you've I likened it to the uh road runner and the coyote where I don't know if you've seen those old cartoons or the sheepdog and whatever they clock in and go, hey, Bill, they were drinking coffee. And then they clock in, they start fighting, right? Um, you know, that was as close as I can get to the phenomenon that was there. You'd go out to lunch together. You'd say hi in the hall, talk about your kids. It didn't matter what party you were. But as soon as you clocked in and you went to the well, everything dropped and then you go back to out to lunch again. Right? So there's this human element that was beyond politics. And there were some handshake three minutes and you don't go after people's children and you know, you know, there's things you didn't do or didn't say, right? And you don't attack people personally and, you know, so it, it's um, it's completely different than when I served there where. You didn't take offense because you would need to work with that same legislator within like thirty minutes. Like you say something at the well, you fight, 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 and then you have to go on committee and you're both on this bill as prime sponsors. Right? So it, it's, it's so different where people don't hold grudges or they didn't at that time. So I'm seeing something very different where people are holding grudges. They can't work with each other either within their own party. And that indicates an absence of leadership to me. Um, that we're, we're not having that same spirit of, hey, we may disagree on this, but we don't have to be disagreeable uh to disagree, right? And work together for the, for the good. And I'll just say this again, um. You know, the, the, the legislature was still very dangerous to your pocketbook and your liberty, even when I served there. But we did the best that we could as a minority to use our voice to slow things down and, and get changes in bills, kill bills. Or, or find a way to amend the bill so it was either toothless or uh completely benign as far as public policy. We did a lot more of that than we got credit for. At least how it was advertised is, is that what we, is what we did. Um, but that's what we were doing for you when we stood up there for four to five to six AM in the morning. And I've got those photos where we're blurry eyed. We've been fighting all night long and taking turns. I mean, you served in the state legislature. You've seen that phenomenon. So we've gotten things in bills, kind of slipped them in that would have been good for liberty. So. Even if you're in a minority, there's a lot of things you can do um to really shine that torch and fill in the gap. Um, and, and provide that kind of leadership um that everybody kind of hangs on to. So, um, but again, back to. You know, the, the absence of leadership is what you're gonna find with people tearing each other down. Holding grudges, trying to cancel you out, which, you know, i- it's, it's really sad to see that, you know, you know. I don't want to say too much because really my main job is the vote and that's what I'm doing every single day when I show up. I'm also providing leadership in my communities and finding solutions and things. So don't require the county commissioner hat, but it does. Um, I, I do provide leadership as far as knowledge and systems analysts and everything else that I can do. To solve these problems where government doesn't need to get involved. That's my favorite place to be. Is providing those solutions to people on the ground. And I, I can do that without being on a committee. Um, you know, all my committees were taken away without explanation. Cause there is none, cause I was doing a great job and we were getting a lot of those things streamlined and, and all those things done for our citizens. So we were getting a lot of feed, positive feedback from that. And uh to have those taken away or to stop a constitution contest. So I ran that by myself as a county commissioner. Um, that was a huge gathering, by the way. It's in the fall usually. Um, and that was um, uh, you know, at Windsor High School. So many of these kids came up and had these wonderful poems and essays um in. Or picture art. It was so beautiful. And they got these bronze busts of our founding fathers and we sang patriotic songs that had God in it. And uh, you know, it, it was, it was a wonderful thing. So you know, those things I can still do for our community and it doesn't require uh anybody's permission. It doesn't require for me to have a title to be a leader. In fact, if you need a title to be a leader, you're not one. Right? So um, so that's, those are things I'm grappling with, but quite honestly, I'm not too very surprised. I dealt with that before in the state legislature, especially when I first came on in twenty thirteen. Shut up, sit down and go vote uh the way we want to vote or you get a primary.
Oh, yeah. So I mean, since you brought it up, you know, being removed from your department oversight duties. You say there's not an explanation. There's not really a, a clear reason why. I mean, but it seems maybe because of how you vote, because you're voting against the institutionalized powers that want to just keep expanding government. I mean, is that, is that a good explanation or? I mean, what else? Uh, what other justification could they have?
Um, well, there was none given and it happened after I started voting uh more frequently, no. And they voted yes, you know, and kind of I think started with the proposition HH lawsuit. I. We're, we're one of the only counties, Republican counties that did not join the lawsuit. And as John Keldare approved, um, you know, that was completely legitimate, that lawsuit, because when he went to the title board, they said, no. This is, this language is completely contrary and it was really the same language. As the um, the Prop HH lawsuit, you know, it's very deceptive. So um, that would have held water, even if a judge doesn't uh agree with us. It's still important to join our friends. And, and join when somebody's being principled, whether you like or don't like that person or they empower you, you need to go with principle and stand with them. So I voted to do that, uh, the rest didn't. So I think that's kind of where everything started. And as I voted no on more of these taxes and that got into the news, that's kind of when everything started moving that direction. So. I think it's, it's really back to what I faced in twenty thirteen when I first got there. There were some of that same cancel culture going on. And there was only three of us. I think it was me, Jess Never and Steve Humphrey that were voting no. Just slightly the majority of the time. There's a lot of bills that are housekeeping bills in the state legislature. So. But um, people said we were crazy for voting no. And then we had more and more people join us over the years. So we actually had the majority of the minority. And uh, we were actually in leadership in the house, which kind of brought a period of peace to everyone because we weren't doing the tit for tat. We weren't punishing our enemies and rewarding our friends. And that's the other thing that you often see when people are in it for power. They punish their enemies and reward their friends. They don't treat everybody equally. Um, so if you make somebody angry, you can see uh the punishment is very visceral sometimes. So um, but I'm built to take it. I've done that before. And again, I'm just, I'm just here to do the job I said I was gonna do, which is to represent you.
Well, no, that makes a lot of sense. I mean, if you're, you know, y- you know, these Republicans serving as well, county commissioners by default are assumed. To be liberty leaders, pro-constitution fighters, everything that we want them to be. So when you have somebody like you come along and say, actually, you know, we're gonna, I'm gonna go and vote no, actually, I think we should do this, we should do that. You know, we should stand up for principle. All of a sudden now, if they're not going along with it, they're gonna look really bad. And all of a sudden now they're exposed as, as not being who people might think they are. So I can understand, you know, as we know, politicians uh. If a drive on, a live off their ego and this idea of this image they've built around themselves. So if somebody comes along and challenges that idea. Of who they represent, who they are, I can see that being really challenging to, to their career, their aspirations. And then wanting to strike back at, at you or somebody like you who's, who's potentially challenging this. That, that makes a lot of sense to me.
Right. And there's an incredible um, that, so the flip side of that, whether I was in the state house or here, there's this incredible. Drive for to go along to get along, because it's so much easier than getting hit in the face, like we've mentioned earlier, right? It's so much easier just to go along to get along and then everybody's fine. And um, and it, that's, that's actually if, again, if you're not doing what you said you were gonna do on the campaign trail. Um, that's, that's not principle. That's not representing your people. Um, and one of the things I was pressured on, and I was again, the only person I abstained from this vote actually, but they were pressuring me and you can hear it on the mic. Um, they were pressuring me to vote for my own redistricting. I didn't think that was right, because if I was gonna run again, that would could potentially benefit me. And so I abstained and you, but you can hear on the mic, they were pressuring me. It's like, well, you need to say why you're doing that and you need to vote this. So you can hear this off the mic and I'm like, no, I'm not doing that. So standing alone i- is very difficult to do. Um, especially in the political sphere, because there is so much tremendous pressure. Just think about the swamp in Washington DC and every politician that you know. That went rah rah rah, I'm gonna vote this way and I'm for freedom and I'm gonna reduce the size of government. And they get in there and guess what they do? Just like Scott Bottom said, they just start falling and getting swampier and swampier. Cause the pressure is intense. And being primaried is no fun, right? And that's what the first thing they, they threaten you with. You know, if you don't sit down and shut up. If you don't vote the way we want you to vote, um, we're gonna get somebody to primary you, which is always very uncomfortable, right? So it's, who's gonna be willing to stand up and do the right thing? When uh it's all very difficult. It, it's very difficult to have your ego slammed over and over again. And have these flyers say you're a bad person. And you know, if you don't do something wrong, they make it up. You know, I learned that through, throughout my career, right? Um, watching these mailers come in like, that's not true. Well, it doesn't matter if it's true. You know, they just have to hit you long enough. So people go, oh, I need to think about that, you know? Um, but thankfully uh we've been very lucky with our caucus system. Um, we have people trying to dismantle. Our caucus system because they didn't get the results they wanted out of it. It's very telling. So we had a state uh Senator Barb Kirkmeier try to run a bill to dismantle caucus. And that's where people who are informed and who are your grassroots base come to also be informed. About who's voting with them and who's voting against them. And those are the people who make those decisions to run as delegates. It's, it's one of the most American systems you had, something our founding fathers even then. But you know, having informed citizens, making those decisions to put people on ballots. Um, you know, that's, that's something we need to fight for. And I imagine that a caucus is gonna be attacked again here in the near future. If it's not this year, uh, we need to be vigilant about that and make sure people are shown up to caucus.
Oh, one hundred percent. So commissioner saying, you know, it, imagine we had, you know, five pro-liberty leaders like yourself, serving on the Weld County uh commissioners. Or, you know, some other county across the state. What, what could you do? What could county commissioners, what could these local municipalities, what can liberty leaders at the local level do? To stand up against Jared Polis and the Democratic controlled legislature?
Uh, what couldn't we do? If we were willing to be strong. Um, I actually took a photo of this because I was just so God stopped, God stopped us. We had a press release, what we were gonna send out to the public. Saying we agree with taking away your gas powered lawn mowers. And leaf blowers. I wrote in there, what? And, and obviously I didn't sign off on it, but um, you know, that message changed after I pointed out back to one person makes a difference. But you know, if we all were on the same page and saying, absolutely not. And here's how this benefits people. If you have less government and less regulation. Um, if we have really strong voices, five, and we're willing to stand on principle, that. There's, there's very few things that we couldn't do to get our messaging across. But when we're compromised, that message isn't gonna come through and being slightly less um. Left than the Democrats, as we have found out, doesn't work. It doesn't work. My fear is that if people aren't gonna trust us if we continue to vote this way. And we have seen just from our state and other parts of the country where when people lose trust, I mean, we'll be replaced by somebody else who's even worse. And that's throughout history as well. So this is, this is not something that we can continue moving forward with as far as continuing to vote for more taxes. I don't think. Um, I don't think people are gonna go for that. And even Boulder, like I said, voted down a very heartfelt. And sh- the children need this and working families need this, but there's a better way, right? And it's not by increasing local taxes and they even saw that. Um, so if um, if Boulder's recognizing people are hurting so bad right now. We've got seniors that are hanging down by their fingernails and they're so very worried. That they're gonna have to move out of their home and they won't be able to afford the Asian place. That's gonna put another burden on society as they try to find somewhere else or live with a family. You know, it's, it's not um. It, it's not good for our working families. I mean, they're, they're scrapping and scraping as it is to put food on the table. And now we're asking them to bear the even additional burden of government. Um, that, that's not only not a popular notion right now, but it's really opening people's eyes. Um, they're really awakening um right now to not only more uh government at the federal. And state level, but they're now seeing it with their local level and how important that is. So I'm hoping people get more engaged. And come around and provide leadership to all of our elected officials. I don't care what county you're in. I don't care if it's a local, like your, your town council, your city council, but coming around those folk, folks and showing up and saying, no more taxes, okay? Find a better way. Find a way to cut red tape. Find a way to actually reduce the size of government and streamline processes. And, and encourage businesses to move in so that we can benefit from that prosperity of innovation and taking risks. Because that happens every single time you reduce the size of government by reducing burdens of regulatory burdens and taxes as we, we get more prosperous. We actually make more money doing that. Um, you know, we need to keep those stories and, and provide that light of leadership where everybody can say, we want to be like that. You know, we wanna, we wanna drive this innovation to our county, to our town. Um, so as if, if we had five, um, you know, people who voted on principle consistently, that tends to draw. People to you. Um, I've, I've noticed that people want to come places where they know the regulatory environment is stable. How often have we heard that from businesses, whether it's a federal level, other places? When your policy is like this. People don't want to come there. They don't want to take a risk there. And so that's what they're finding uh right now is we've got a regulatory environment that's bouncing up and down and up and down. And I've had a lot of business owners talk to me the past couple of months saying, what is going on in Weld County? Um, well. Back to, we, we need to um, a- again, understand um. What a risk it is to open a business. And we need to educate all of our staff what it takes. I'll give you one quick example. We had a staff member. And this is public record, so uh I don't mind talking about this at all, but she got up there and she had told the business owner that they have to bring up a county road to standard. So what that means, just easily translated, you're gonna put a ton of money up front, a hundred grand or more. To bring a county road up to county standard because your business, you're opening a new business there. Well, it doesn't make sense because there's a lot of businesses that already exist on that county road. And not one of them was asked to bring it up to county standard. So understand this business hasn't even put a stick in the ground yet. They're not open for business. It takes a long time to get people to realize they're in business. So I was able to at least get them a triggered improvement by asking some questions, because none of what was. Being presented in a public meeting made any sense. We have what's called trigger improvements for other businesses, larger businesses, which basically means. You only make the improvements that are needed for the traffic that you generate at the time. Well, that makes a lot of sense, right? If your, your business isn't open, why are you paying for improvements upfront? So I, they may not have been able to open that business. It's your dream business. It's a wedding event venue, by the way. And, you know, we were able to get that for them, but the attitude of this bureaucrat was, well, that's our decision. And she just stood up there and going. Well, wait a minute, hold on a second. Uh, let me ask you some more questions. And the rest of the county commissioners did vote. Uh, we all voted the same way to allow them a, a relief. And have those triggered improvements. But I can't imagine how many other businesses. Have not been started in Weld County because some bureaucrat said, well, no, we're gonna make you pay for all these road improvements. Well, that's kind of why you pay taxes, isn't it? I mean, that's a basic role in government is provide roads. And yes, we should not pay developments way and all that good stuff. But at the same time, we shouldn't be doing an uh overdue burden on businesses, especially when they're starting, right? So um, that's one of those things where. My eyes were really open as far as they, they don't have any sense of what it takes. To really get a business up and started or even keep one here. We had another similar situation two years ago where. Um, one business was required to do all the improvements. It was four million dollars and they said, we're leaving the state. See ya. And so I got involved in that situation and got it down to not only a reasonable figure, but everybody along. All the businesses that already are doing their shared in that improvement. And of course, we did too, as Weld County. Um, it, it was necessary. We did determine that. I, they actually told me, well. There, no truck traffic goes over here. There's nothing going on here. So we just stood on the corner. We had a meeting outside. That's one of my favorite meetings, by the way. Not in a county building, but we're actually onsite. And we all stood and watched these trucks and I counted the trucks. I'm like, are you sure about that? Cause I just saw twenty trucks go by. And they were tearing up the roads. So I mean, there, there is a place for people paying for their, their own improvements. But at the same time, you know, we, we have a, a lack of understanding sometimes with people who have never had to invest or risk anything. Um, where we've, we've probably turned quite a bit of business away and I may not realize it and others may not realize it, but. Um, when, when you have somebody in there who's invested in, in making Weld County prosperous. And really. You know, representing the people and what's best for them and best for towns and cities. Um, you know, you can, you can provide that leadership and that was outside of a committee, by the way. That was something that somebody alerted me to. And that was an offsite meeting that I, I initiated. So mostly these things are gonna happen without official blessing or not. Again, it's back down to where you vote, because that's how you enact policy in the state legislature. That's how you enact policy at the local government level, 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 I can't talk all of a sudden, level, whether it's county government or it's town and cities. You actually have to do that in an open meeting format where the public can see you voting. So that's really where the rubber meets the road anyway. So I'm gonna continue to vote and represent my citizens ha- as I presented when I was running for this position, no matter what happens to me.
Oh, wonderful. And yeah, what a great example too of the importance of county government. You know, how county governments can be so responsible for the lack of jobs or the lack of employers or, you know, pushing the good businesses out of the community that really has a detrimental effect. or, you know, pushing the good businesses out of the community that really has a detrimental effect. And then how good county commissioners and good governance can attract that business, you know, improve the lives of the people in the community by providing them new opportunities. Higher paying jobs and, and you know, the all the benefits that come with that, the the exponential benefits that come from all ancillary businesses and the local community that experience that, that wealth being injected into their into their area. So Commissioner saying, I have one last question for you here. You know, serving in the state legislature for eight years, what advice do you have for Colorado's liberty leaders, liberty legislators who are now serving in the General Assembly?
Well, um, I'll hearken back to Scott Bottoms and what he said is, one person can make a difference. There's so many other examples that would take us hours and hours to discuss. Uh, how I helped our local citizens here in Wealth County, but also at the state, I was able to help get some bills through even as a county commissioner to advocate for those or kill bills. Um, there's times I've been up till uh one o'clock in the morning again, testifying on bills and those bills got amended. Um, but Scott Bottoms is right, if you, uh especially if you're a Christian in this 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 Babylon that we find ourselves in, right, Babylon's kind of an idea, but, you know, um about this increasing control over our lives and bowing to uh the god of control or the king. Um, we need people more than ever to step into those positions and those areas of difficulty and and, you know, stand in the gap. And stand in the gap for others and just like when I got up um at the podium and I inspired other people to run. Right, and I was speaking against all these gun bills, even though I was being told, sit down, sit down. And being pressured not to do that, it inspired others to run, so if you can stand in the gap and you can take the heat. Um, and and not and not bow down, you're, we are supposed to work for the good of everyone, right? As if if you're you're Christian, you look to the example of Daniel, right, he worked for the good of Babylon. But at the same time, he didn't bow down before their gods. You you still resist and take a stand for the things that are good, that are truly uh beneficial uh to folks that are uh moral, that are, um, excuse my alarm, and you know, you you do all those sayings without bending principle. And in fact, uh you don't have to compromise to get principal things done, if you actually do principal things. You attract others to you, if you look at all the bills I've run, I didn't compromise any principle on those. But I had Democrats come around the bill because it was a good bill and it was good for people, it's the same in local government too. Um, stand on principle and you will get great things done and people will come to you uh for uh solutions that are problems.
That is great advice, definitely, you know, stand up, speak out, be that voice out there in the community. Uh, you know, like you said, inspiring people to to get involved, to stand up, to speak out, even if it's just testifying down at the state Capitol. I mean, that can make such a huge difference, uh you know, you might not necessarily change uh somebody's vote. But nonetheless, being there and um standing up and speaking out, it's it's important to speak truth to power. I I encourage people to be, get down to the state legislature, show up at a committee hearing, be ten feet away from one of these authoritarian socialists, look them in the eye, tell them they're wrong. You know, and then also be down there to support our good leaders and everything that they've been working towards uh to protect our rights and expand our our right to keep and bear arms, to run our businesses and all of that. So I know you've seen it and I appreciate your time tonight. Uh, Commissioner, what can people do to to help you out, I, you're running for reelection? Uh, what can people do to help support your campaign and continue to keep Wealth County this free county here in Colorado?
Well, one thing you can do is definitely volunteer for my campaign. Um, or donate and obviously, marketing works, so the more I can get the message out there that I'm the only commissioner that voted for these things, that I've done all these things. Um, you know, to uh again, enable freedom and prosperity and liberty uh for all people, not uh not punishing friend or punishing enemies, rewarding friends, right? Um, make sure you go to saineforwell, so that's S A I N E numeral four, well, that uh dot com and you can find a place to contact me and volunteer or donate as well, so. Uh, it's a grassroots campaign as it always is and you can also show up the caucus as well. Um, and be informed about what's going on and you can also be enlivened um by the discussion of every patriots that feel just the same way you do. I know a lot of people feel very separated and alone right now when they see all the uh things going on in this world and are disappointed uh at various leaders, uh usually in their own party as well. There's a lot of people fighting for you and they don't necessarily get the press like others are, so just just know that there's still people out there. And 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 the more folks that come around and and help us get that message out by volunteering, making those phone calls, knocking doors with me and again donating. Uh, we can make sure somebody is in there standing for you and making sure that these things are defeated. And we actually enact good policy instead and that's why, that's why I continue to serve. Um, and be that I'm not always the lone voice, but sometimes it feels like it, uh you're never truly alone, are you, Brandon? I mean, uh, you know, and God we trust is the motto that hangs uh right behind us every day in our boardroom when we take those votes. And so if we truly believe there's a higher power, uh we should always work unto God, um, you know, rather than work onto men. And um you'll usually make the right decision that way.
Well said, well said, well, thank you so much, Commissioner saying, I appreciate your time this evening and uh keep us up to date if there's any uh big developments in Wealth County.
I will, absolutely. Thank you.
Take care.